This conference will now be recorded.
Good for you.
Okay, we'll call to order the meeting of the zoning commission for September the 23rd at 7:03 PM. We have commissioners Vigliotti, Pacola, Henrick and Solhavy present. Pat Sullivan and Jay Hibansky from staff and alternate members for Det and Wynn. I've not seen Mr. Francis yet, so Mr. Wynn, would you be willing to sit in for Mr. Francis until such time as he arrives?
That'll be fine.
Okay. Okay, we have one continued item on our agenda that's 2370 Stratford Avenue petition of T&amp;C Properties LLC seeking a special case in site plan approval. Instruct new gasoline dispensing station and convenience store in a CA zone.
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, I'm not sure if Mr. Wynn was able to attend our meeting last month to hear the testimony, previous testimony for 2370 Stratford Ave.
Okay.
Do we want to double check?
I was on.
Great, excellent. Sorry to interrupt.
Good point. I almost missed that one. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Proto, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Mrs. De Silio, it's good to see you again. We've, after our meeting last month, we went back and took a look at the site. We also went back to DOT and to talk with them about the truck usage and the usage of Bruce Avenue as an exit for the trucks. And what we've done is we've redesigned the site lightly, and I believe you have access to those plans, as well as the new turning radiuses. And we have both Mr. Zumo and, excuse me, and I thought we had our architect on. I thought I saw him. I think he's here someplace. Yep, there he is. Mr. Cota is here. And regards to the, to the site, if you briefly, basically, the difference is what we've done is we've moved the canopy and the gas dispensers back closer to Stratford Avenue by, I believe, approximately four feet, which has opened up additional space between the park, the car parking area in front of the store and the canopy. What that's allowed us to do after we spoke with DOT was to be able to utilize Bruce Avenue. And we, we, you should have a new turning radius. I'll call it a drawing or photo. It's a little bit of both, which shows the truck entering the property on Stratford Avenue, being able to turn into the tank area to unload, not interfering or not coming in contact anywhere near or anywhere with the parked, parking areas, being able to exit out on a left turn on Bruce Avenue to come back to the light at Stratford Avenue and take their left or right, whichever way they're going to go from there. So what we, I think we've done here, and again, we can go through it a little, in a little more detail, is picked up additional space, which I know everyone was concerned about with or without the truck between the parking area and the fueling area. And by doing so, we've opened up that space to allow the truck more room to come in and, and DOT's permission to exit out onto Bruce Avenue and then to Stratford Avenue.
Ben, this is Jay Hibansky. Would you, would any of your team like the presenter status to, to show the plans or you just let me know?
Yeah, we might need that because for some reason I've tried on two devices. I can't get at that file for some reason.
Okay, so hold on just a second. Let me, let me bring up the plan. I'm sorry. I thought you were looking at the plans that, that we had submitted. Just have to get mine here. Hang on.
The old ones and the new ones are there, I think.
The, the, the new ones are on the website. That's where I'm looking at right now.
Okay, actually, I got, I got it. I got it now.
So the, so the new one would have the vehicle exiting out onto Bruce Ave?
Correct. So, hang on, let me just break mine up and then I can ask Jay to share my screen with you. Jay, if you could give me the screen. Okay. Okay, so my, can everyone see the site plan?
Yes, okay, I can see.
Okay, you got that?
Yeah.
All right, so what we've done, and again, Jim Zumo's on, so he can, he can help explain this, but what we've done is we've taken the canopy and gas dispensers and moved them back towards Stratford Avenue by about four, I think it's just a tad over four feet to pick up additional space in between the parking area and the, the canopy dispensing area. And what that's allowed us to do, can you see the turn, the next one I put up, the turning radiuses?
It's truck turn, okay.
Ben, could you expand the window a little bit so everyone could see a little better?
Is that better?
Thank you.
I, I, it's hard to tell because it only shows up on mine on a little screen, so, so I'm not sure. Can everyone see that? Better?
Yeah.
Okay, so as you can see, what we've done by picking up the, some additional space and getting DOT's permission to utilize Bruce Avenue, the truck will make its turn into, into the facility from Stratford Avenue. It can get to its fueling location, which is here where the tanks are, exit Bruce Avenue. It will take a left. It's not going to go right under the railroad tracks and come out back to Stratford Avenue. There's a traffic signal here, so it will utilize the traffic light for its turn and go on its way wherever it's going to go. Those are the, the primary changes from, you know, the, the discussion that we had last month in regards to the, the, the truck issue and the utilization of additional space to try to pick up some additional space between the park area, the parking area and the, the canopy. And it may be best at this point, since I think we, we kind of went through a whole lot of this last month and the primary changes are the movement of the canopy and the utilization of Bruce Avenue for the truck to maybe just answer some, some specific questions that members may have.
Any questions from members? Just ask for permission because I can't see.
Everybody looks like they're muted, Chris.
Oh. As far as, it looks like, Mike Henrick, by, by pushing it towards the road, you've got the, the esplanade in the middle there in front of the, on, on Stratford Ave there. Will you have enough room to get the cars, if they go in and then, and then face towards Stratford Ave, will there be enough room for them to exit out with the esplanade there? I can't see the number there in the middle, but.
Trying to make it a little bigger for you, Mike. Hang on. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, so, all right, so you got 18 feet from the edge of the, from the edge of the roof up to the, to the esplanade?
Yep, and then 14 feet at the intersection. So I, I, I mean, I'll let Jim or Ramaz talk about that, but I, I think that's probably sufficient space for a car because the, the biggest turn would be if they were coming from the pump closest to Bruce Avenue to go out that way. They would have to make this turn here. Whereas if they were here or here, there are, they've got a much, it's more of a straight shot than a turn. So the big turn is from, from the Bruce Avenue pump to come out Stratford.
Yeah, and, and that's 18 feet to the roof as well, not to the, to the edge of the pump.
Not to the dispenser, right. So you're picking up another, Jim can tell you, but.
Yeah, Jimmy, Lance Van services, Jimmy Zumo. It's 23 feet to the, to the actual filling station.
So if somebody can't make that turn, they probably shouldn't be driving anyway.
Me and, me and Ramiz went back and forth on the distances. We had changed it about two or three times and, you know, 18 feet, 18 feet to the canopy, 23 to the filling station, and there's still, I mean, you know, there is a little bit of room there, but we, 18 feet is plenty of, of room to, to move around.
Okay.
Especially, especially with two entries and exits onto Stratford Ave.
Right, right. Correct. So you had some, I noticed in the, I didn't get to open up, you have the architectural review board. Were those as part of the last submission or are they new since we've met?
No, the, I, I believe we took into account, and Ramiz, you can jump in here, but I think we took into account all of the architectural review board's suggestions and recommendations and built them into, they were primarily the building and the screening they wanted for the mechanicals that were on the ground. But Ramiz, maybe you could, I, I don't, I don't think that we didn't take one of their suggestions. I think they incorporated all of their suggestions and that was in the original plan.
Okay, all right.
Yes, we just go to Licensed Architects, State of Connecticut. We did take into account all of the building related comments, including the material updates facing Bruce Avenue, the water table, the landscaping, the shielding of the HVAC units and all of that.
This is Jay Hibansky here. I can read the, the five recommendations that the zoning commission wishes that were given by the architectural review board.
Yeah, I can, I can see now. You want to read them for those who maybe can't?
Sure. The recommendations were to change the veneer along Bruce Avenue side of the building to stone rather than stucco. The water table on Bruce Avenue should be stone veneer. Number two, maximize landscaping and work with the town and DOT to do so. Screen the HVAC units behind Bruce Avenue. Provide exterior lighting that is visually pleasant and consistent with the aesthetic of the building. And lastly, consider siding as recommended in the architectural review handbook rather than stucco. And I'll let the applicant respond.
Ramiz, you can just address those, but I think all of those recommendations were incorporated into the, the, the design that you received, the initial design that you received last month and has not changed with this month's design.
That is correct.
Okay, very good. Other questions? Let's just go around the room. Mr. Vigliotti, any questions for you?
I don't have any questions. So I guess the only thing I would say, you're just looking at the fact that they moved the, the canopy four feet forward so the truck only can go into the space between the canopy and the building, right? There'd be no way for the truck to move for any reason.
There would be, there would be no reason for the truck and no way for the truck to get into that space between the canopy and Stratford Avenue. I think that's.
We did, Jimmy, we did add on the new plan. Ben, if you could pop over to the new plan?
I think that's what you have up, Jim.
Yes, so on the right-hand side, we added like a, a truck filling area where that spot is, let me just take a look real quick. Give me one second.
One of the parking areas, Jim? I, I can make it smaller.
To, to the right of the, to the right of the canopy.
Oh, I see what you're saying. The fueling station, this here?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Um, we added a 54-foot spot over there so that when they fuel, they could pull up to the side and fuel up into the, into the, the, the tanks so that they're not parked in front. I know, I think me and Mike went back and forth on that last week, last month. So they're not parked directly in front of the parking spaces in front of the building. So that that truck can move up to the right, park their fuel, you know, put his cones out so that people know that he's fueling so they're not running over it. And then, and then go over there and, and then back out, back a little bit and then pull out onto Bruce Ave.
Would the truck back into there? Would he like back into the space from Stratford Avenue?
No, he could pull straight into that. He could come off of Stratford Ave and kind of loop back into it.
Okay, that's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wynn? Any questions?
I don't have anything specific to say. Let me see the structure of the building. My question would more be geared towards, I've seen a lot of gas stations where they have multiple entities on site. Would, would this gas station have that or will it just be one entity occupying the premise?
When you say entity, would you mean, for instance, a Dunkin' Donuts or a Starbucks and something like that?
Yep.
I think we, I'm not, I think we have the operator with us, but I don't believe that is the case. I believe it will be wholly operated by the operator. There, there will be no subtenants or partnerships to the best of my knowledge, but I know I have, I think we have the operator on. And if so, he might be able to better answer that. But to the best of my knowledge, based on conversations we have, it's a single entity operation.
Good to know.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pacola, any questions?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here for the first time around, but I believe they did everything that was requested of them. I see no problem and I'm glad to see something moving in there from, you know, being abandoned. That's all I have to say.
Did you have a chance to review the tape from last time?
Yes, I did. And I saw that, you know, the problem was with the truck, with the turning, you know, and everything. And, you know, they, the applicant has corrected that and I see no problem.
Okay, thank you. I think, I think I'm pretty satisfied here and I do thank the applicant for taking the time to, you know, put this on hold and, and revise it. My only, just quickly, I'm, I'm sure you've accounted for this, but the trucks can get underneath the canopy, correct?
Yes.
And the drivers will be instructed that they cannot make a right-hand turn onto Bruce Avenue, correct?
Yes.
They'll figure that out pretty quick.
They're not going to want to go under the railroad track.
I was going to say, I don't think they'd be able to fit and we might, I'm sure the traffic department will make sure that, I, I, I have, I can't remember if they have signage as to what the clearance of that railroad underpass is, but we might just want to double check it and make sure that that's actually posted correctly. Because I don't believe that's a state road. I think that's just part of the town road.
Town road.
Yeah, okay. Those are my only questions. Okay, I guess last guest call. Anything else for anyone?
I did have one more question.
Okay, sure, Mr. Henry.
One of the points of the architectural review board, and I think I read it correctly, was the suggestion to use a siding material other than stucco. And on, on your proposed elevations, it's shown that Bruce Ave elevation is brick and then the other three is stucco. Is that? I think you had mentioned that you, I think you mentioned you, you had taken all the, maybe you didn't take that one and go, or accept that one, but, or did I misread it?
Quick, Ramiz Cota here. That was a recommendation that was given. I did run it by the operator and, you know, he, I guess their preference was to kind of keep it with what is presented to you today.
Okay.
So I think we changed on Bruce Avenue, Mike, but not on the other side, which is predominantly mechanical and there's a great deal of, as you can see, landscaping there. But I think their concern was the view from Bruce Avenue predominantly.
Okay, and, and the front will be stucco as well? With, with, you had, you had the brick or this, the brick or the stone water table, I guess they call it, and then stucco above. And I'm not opposed to that. Look, I just.
Hang on.
Correct. It would be, the base would be a thin stone veneer with stucco above with decorative coining on the left and right of the building to give it more of a decorative look with some additional retro style lighting in the front.
All right, that, that was my other question. Thanks.
Okay, there's no further questions. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing portion for this application. Actually, no, yeah, sorry.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Henrick. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Pacola. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearing unanimously. New item number one, 3555 Main Street petition of T&amp;J Properties and Blake Properties seeking a special case in site plan review. Convert a first floor professional office and two second floor apartments into a four-unit residence apartment in a CA zone.
Jay, you want to screen back?
Yeah, we need them screened back.
Ben, you have to turn it off.
I, how do I do that? Help me out.
Click on yourself. There should be a few dots next to your screen.
Hang on, I gotta find me.
You have to find yourself, right?
Okay.
You got it?
Yep.
You have it, Jay?
It says you have the controls, Ben.
Yeah, hang on. Got to figure out, I got to find my three little dots.
You can see your face. It's probably to the top right corner.
Yep, if you hover your cursor over your own image.
Yeah, I can't find my image. That's the problem.
It's on the bottom of the screen.
Go to the bottom. You got that little yellow circle there in the middle. Click on that.
Yeah, but I, some reason, Mike.
At the very bottom of your screen.
Yep.
Head center. You need a new mouse.
No, I can't. Actually, I can't seem to find me.
Yeah, but if you click on that, it should pop up on that little yellow. Maybe you have to minimize your screen to get to it.
Oh, there I am. Okay, now I got me. Why can't I do this? It should not be this hard.
Jay. Can you see your face?
Yeah, I'm not finding the, the controls. I'm sorry.
Okay, Ben, tell you what. You've got the access to log back in. I'm just going to have you log out. I'm going to dismiss you and then log back in.
Yep.
Okay, we should be all set.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Owen. How are you?
I'm not doing too bad. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Well, it's nice seeing you on the computer as opposed to meeting you over the telephone.
This is going to be the way we'll be for a while now.
Jay, you want to start? You want me to start now or what do you want to do?
Go right ahead, Nick.
All right.
Yeah, I already called it, so we're, we're good to go.
Okay, gentlemen, good evening. Nick Owen here, representing the petitioner, T&amp;J Properties and Blake Properties, located at 355 Main Street Stratford, along with a number of other properties owned by the same entities and the same individual with adjoining addresses. I'll give you a little bit of brief history on this and then I'll go directly into the petition because it appears based on Mr. Hibansky's comments, he has pretty much made my presentation this evening and I sincerely appreciate it. We originally got approval on this property back in 2015 to put second story additions on some of these buildings. And along with that, we received a number of waivers and one of those waivers was a parking waiver, which we assumed at the time, and I believe that the parking waiver encompassed all of the properties, including 355 Main Street, the subject of this application that you are now hearing. Unfortunately, we more or less miscalculated because the address 355 Main Street wasn't included on the initial plan and on the February 2015 A2 survey, although the building was located on that and all of the parking that was on the property was reduced and waived to the appropriate number of parking spots on which the waivers for that parking were granted. However, in going over the petition, Jay and I went back and forth for several months on how to attack this along with the help of John Rosowski. And Jay determined that we in fact needed waivers for parking on that specific piece, 355 Main Street. We did file the petition in September, September 2nd. It was, it was approved to waive the parking and to waive additional other conditions and variances that were required to simply convert a pre-existing house from commercial on the first floor to residential on the first floor. All of us have driven through Paradise Green many times and we all know where the Blake Shopping Center is. It is the yellow house on the corner of Main Street in, I think it's Paradise Green Place. It is. And that was a wood frame, and it is a wood frame, two-family house with siding on it. It is yellow in color. You should be aware that the second floor is already occupied with two, two-bedroom apartments. Mr. Blake lost his tenant of 25 years. It was a Dennis that was previously located on the first floor. He retired and Mr. Blake has attempted to rent this out as commercial space for almost 18 months with, to no avail because it is a house-looking property and not commercially designed like all of the other properties. It has a set of stairs going up, so it's not ground level and it's not conducive to commercial use for anything other than a professional, than professional office space, and no one has come along. So he decided to ask me if I would present this petition to see if we can get it approved by the appropriate boards and commissions to convert the first floor into two, two, two-bedroom apartments. Therefore, I am here tonight requesting that you approve this property, the first floor of this property into a residential use to make the entire property a residential use. In other words, we are seeking to do two two-bedroom apartments on the first floor, so the building will be 100% residential at that point. If you've taken the time, and I'm sure you have, to read over Mr. Hibansky's comments on November 17th, 2020, he indicates to you that all of the required variances that were needed prior to us proposing, appearing before the zoning commission were met. And in his discussion, he discusses basically that it would be a good adjunct to this particular piece of property and to Paradise Green in itself to make additional apartments. There are no three-plexes or four-plexes in town of this nature. And if there are, I'll recant that a little bit. They're very far and few between and most of them, I believe, are in the, the south end with the exception of one or two properties in Paradise Green that are zone two family. There are apartments above several locations, commercial locations in Paradise Green. I don't need to enumerate those to you. I'm sure you are aware of them. And based on that, we have complied with all of the other regulations as far as I know, and I determined based on some research that there is no opposition to this. There really isn't any adverse comments. I haven't heard of any. I haven't seen any in the file and I've checked with the zoning office on several occasions. And I feel that the commission should, should consider this and convert this first floor into two, two fam, two, two-bedroom apartments. There was plenty of commercial space in Paradise Green. In fact, there are a number of spaces in Paradise Green that have remained on the market for rent that have not been occupied as of yet. Mr. Blake would like to fill this, fill this property. All it's doing at this point is costing him money in maintenance and property taxes. And we feel that based on this and especially Jay's very favorable comments that the commission should favor. very favorable comments, that the commission should favorably look upon this petition. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay, questions for members? Mr. Hendrick?
Mr. Owen, I, I appreciate how thoroughly you read through, uh, Mr. Habansky's comments. Um, I was waiting for you to get to the bottom two sentences. Uh, he talked about, uh, landscaping and outside appearances. What's, what?
Well, that's really, the landscaping is really a second bite at the apple that Jay is trying to take. Uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals discussed it. Uh, there was no, uh, there was no indication in their petition that we have to do it. However, Mr. Blake is willing to plant, uh, to put several planters on the property where you see the hash marks and the V, V-shaped sections right in front of the property. Uh, as far as the disrepair, any repairs that need to be done when he converts the first floor to two-family will be done. There are no serious changes contemplated, uh, on the, um, on that building, it's in fairly good shape, it just needs some repair work, which will be done. Uh, if you are familiar with Mr. Blake, and I'm sure some of you are, he takes pretty good care of all his properties, and this one will be maintained, uh, in the same tradition.
Okay, so, so, um, so you will be doing some, some exterior, I, I don't know exactly, I, I read the comments, I don't know, um, exactly, uh, what, what, I know, uh, let's see, he said, "Lack of landscape and contributes little to the streetscape character, which would benefit from additional green space visible to the public." Uh, "The commission should consider requiring permanent removable planters to be installed and maintained." Is that something that, that's acceptable to you guys? And it, it doesn't say where, or, or the size, or what kind of plants you're gonna put in there?
Well, I pretty much agree with Mr. Habansky's comments, and I certainly understand where you're coming from, Mr. Hendrick. Um, the, as previously indicated, the exterior where it needs repair will be repaired in good order, and the planters will be, um, uh, put in front of those, um, uh, those hash mark spaces where there are Vs, where there's no parking, or parking is not, um, uh, is really not gonna work in those spaces, and we have no issue with that. Making the removal subject for that.
Is that what you're talking, I can see it now.
Yes.
It'll be some sort of greenscape?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, now, as you know, I was in favor of this before, and would have voted for it before you got the variance, because I didn't feel you needed, but, uh, Mr. Habansky is the boss when it comes to that, and I'm glad you guys were able to work it out.
It took us a while, because there was no clear way under the regulations to get something that I think we both felt, and I'm not gonna speak for Mr. Habansky, he can disagree with me, something, uh, this, a simple petition, we had to jump through hoops to get it done.
Well, I'm, I'm glad you're good at jumping through hoops, and I look forward to seeing this.
Well, I don't know if I can jump, I might be able to walk through.
Walk through. Well, I'm glad it worked out for you.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Vigliati, any questions?
Uh, no, Mr. uh, Hendrick addressed the question that I had, thanks.
Okay, Mr. Wen? Any questions, Mr. Wen?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Recola?
No questions, all set.
Okay. Um, so, just, I saw we got all the variances, so the new residents here, they will be parking in that, that lined area on Paradise Green Place, is that correct?
No, uh, yes, they will.
They will, and, um, and then obviously, if they need any more, they have that area in the back, right?
They have the area in the back, and they can certainly park in any area, uh, wherever parking is delineated on the entire properties, on all of them, they're all connected.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay, Owen, any other questions, last chance members? Mr. Habansky?
Yeah, just to clarify, I wanna make sure that, uh, Mr. Owen and Mr. Hendrick are talking about the same place. It's the, uh, the diagram, the overhead aerial that I, that I had submitted, that sh, it's the parking lot adjacent, correct? Is that where, where everyone's talking about? I wanna make sure I have the conditions correct in my notes for the removable plant, for the planters.
Right, that would be in front of those, in front of three, five, 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 and in front of the building on the plan that's marked one-story masonry frame building with addresses thirty-five, sixty-one, thirty-five, sixty-three, and thirty-five, sixty-five. I believe that's what we're talking about.
That's what I assumed. I just wanted to double check, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, the one, the picture you sent, Jay, I think was, it had a picture of, uh, it was on the corner of Main Street and Paradise, and, and then it had the two little triangles in there.
Great.
It had, yeah, it has, uh, three triangles in there, it has three triangles in there.
I don't know if the third one's a triangle, I see what you're saying.
Well, okay, that's by the parking spots, right?
Right, yes.
Okay.
The little stars.
Yeah, I got it. Okay. Last chance, okay.
I thank you for your time.
Okay, any further questions? If not, we'll take a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Motion to close, Mr. Vigliati, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Wen, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, no. Hearings unanimously, and we'll take a motion to recess our public hearing. Return the public hearing.
Motion to, motion to close, public hearing?
Yeah, end the public hearing and go into our administrative session, so yeah, Mr. Hendrick, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Recola.
Mr. Recola, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, carries unanimously, so that will conclude at seven forty P M. And if it just give me a quick minute here, I'll get my agenda, and we'll switch to right into the admin session.
How the hell do you turn off?
Actually, we can go right in there, so, uh, first item is, uh, twenty-three seventy Stratford Avenue, you have a motion to take it off the table?
Motion to take twenty-three seventy Stratford Ave off the table?
Motion, Mr. Hendrick, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Vigliati.
Second. Second, Mr. Vigliati, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, okay, it's carries unanimously, it's off the table. Your pleasure, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Hendrick.
I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Hendrick, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Recola.
Second by Mr. Recola, discussion, gentlemen?
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mike Hendrick, um, the applicant, we, we had some concerns, uh, with the, with the original application, I think the applicant has done a, done a good job of addressing those concerns. Um, I think, I think, you know, based on the current condition of that property, uh, this would be a, a great improvement, I, I think it'll, it'll help tie in that area, um, you know, to the rest of, the rest of the improvements that are going along, or at least even be an anchor, since it's kinda towards the end there, but I think it fits well in the neighborhood, I think they've done a good job, I think they've taken the comments of, of all the various boards and incorporated them, uh, into their application, and, um, and, and I wholeheartedly support it.
Okay. Further comments? Okay, I'll just add this, I, I concur with those comments, Mr. Hendrick, I, I believe that, uh, they were very responsive to our questions, and, um, you know, we're, we're able to go and re, re, revamp the turning radius issue. Um, I think it's been, it's actually quite good that, this is a almost, whether it falls into the formal definition uh, or not, this is really a brownfield reclamation, because that had been a, the, the Wade's Garage property had been uh, pretty much an eyesore for quite a while, so returning it to, to, um, productive use, um, I think makes, makes great sense. And, um, considering that actually was a gas station way back in the day, a Texaco, I think it was, always stretched your car, the Mandarin Star. Uh, it was, uh, it's now nice to see that coming back. Um, I have no other further stipulations, I think they've presented us with their, um, landscaping, um, plan, so that looks good. Uh, Jay, anything I'm missing as far as, uh, stipulations, or any other things we need to bring up for the record?
No, no, nothing for me, I think I saw the architectural, I, I know, um, Commissioner Hendrick mentioned, uh, the conditions or recommendations from the Architectural Review Board. Looks like they incorporated every single one of those, except for the stone veneer along the side by the mechanics, mechanicals, which is okay with me, um, so I have nothing further to add. Thank you.
Can we, can we just make sure that, uh, the town reviews, to make sure that, um, um, and it may be, I just don't know, uh, just, can we just make sure that adequate signage is posted as far as the, uh, the clearance under the railroad tracks on there, yeah, Jay?
Uh, so the commission may wanna put that on to the applicant to communicate with the, um, uh, Public Works Department, ensuring that proper signage is put on the trestle?
Yep, okay.
Would it be, would it be on the trestle, or would it be across the street? Um, you know, as vehicles come out, they would take a ride, you know, probably should say, before they make that right-hand turn, uh, no right turn, you know, vehicles over whatever, ten feet or eight feet or?
I see, this is Jay, Commissioner Hendrick, I see what you're saying, so maybe, uh, uh, no trucks over X feet shall be take, shall take a right. And have that on the, on the actual gas station property.
That actually would be good, because that's really the only one that, you know, the only concern, I think, it, it may be signed earlier than that, but it's just so that, you know, the truck as it's leaving knows that it can't get underneath that railroad track, and I mean, if it got stuck in there, that would really be a problem.
If it continues to happen at Cumberland Farms, it will happen there, no matter how many signs there are.
I, you know, you just gotta do your best sometimes, so. Okay, uh, any other comments, stipulations? So, if that's okay with the mover and seconder, we'll add that stipulation on there?
Works for me.
Okay.
My camera.
And Mr. Recola, you okay with that?
Yes, I am, I agree.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben, good night.
Having a good night, gentlemen, ladies.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Hendrick, you wanna pick up the next one?
Motion to take thirty-five fifty-five Main Street off the table.
Motion to take thirty-five fifty-five Main Street off the table, by Mr. Hendrick, is there a second, Mr. Vigliati? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no, carries unanimously, it's off the table.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Hendrick, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Recola.
Second by Mr. Recola. Uh, okay, so moved and seconded, uh, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Hendrick, um, as I had stated earlier, uh, I was in favor of this originally. They, you know, uh, according to the regulations, they did need to get a variance on the parking, uh, which they have done. Um, they have agreed to do some plantings there, as Mr. Habansky had asked, and prepare some of the exterior, um, disrepair. Um, I think it, it does fit into the neighborhood, I, I think it will actually be a better usage as a, as a, an apartment as opposed to a, some type of a commercial space that might require, uh, more parking, so I think it'll fit in better, I, I think, um, I think the property works well there, even though the size is somewhat limited, and, and so I think it'll be an improvement to what's there, and fits into, uh, the character of, of the neighborhood, so I would be in favor of it.
Okay. Further discussion, members?
With Mr. Vigliati, I think, uh, uh, you know, having gotten all the variances approved by, uh, Z B A, there, there's no reason not to approve this, and so I'm in favor of it as well.
Okay. Yeah, let me add, uh, I'll, uh, oh, Mr. Recola or Mr. Wen, any comments?
No, I have had, uh, Mr. Recola, I've had people ask me about living in the Paradise Green area, and I think a couple of years back, they said that house would be perfect for him. I don't remember who it was, might have been Mr. Owen, but, um, I'll try tracking him down.
Okay, um, so the only thing I wanna say, I wanna say, I appreciate that the applicant took the time to go to the B Z A and get all of this, um, resolved. Um, it appears to, and, and I do, do note, uh, Mr. Habansky's comments, that, uh, um, this does conform, I think you have actually in here the planning conservation and the F P S C D in here, did I miss it here?
I believe I, it, it helps to create, uh, I have, um,
Oh yeah, here it is, "Walkable pedestrian-friendly environment is something the town views a short and long-term goal per the planning, conservation, and development." Um, and then you mentioned the landscaping contributes to the streetway character, but I guess that's being accommodated, uh, by this. Uh, yeah, my only concern was with the parking, but I guess this is going to, uh, it's been all settled now that they're going to be able to utilize both the strip-on, um, Paradise Green Place, and then whatever in the back that they, they actually need. Um, could be an interesting pilot for future development as the scape of retail continues to evolve as we go through, you know, life and COVID, um, so I was very skeptical when it first came through, but it looks like you got everything in order, so I'll be supporting the application. Okay. Any other comments from any commissioners? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. It's approved, congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Hendrick?
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of the nine-nine twenty-twenty meeting?
Motion to approve the minutes of the nine-nine twenty-twenty meeting, Mr. Hendrick, is there a second?
Second by LaMuzin.
Second by Lamp, um, any corrections, changes? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. I'm a little bit of a loss here, guys, I can't find the, uh, the work agenda out here. I was sort of weighing it so far, but I only see when we have the nine-twenty-three, all it's got is the, uh, the public hearing.
It goes down CAM site review, zoning enforcement study, accessory apartment applications, sediment erosion control, planning projects, which there's nothing listed on there. I don't know if Mr. Habansky had anything. And then the next one would be the text amendment suggestion for the zoning Board of Appeals. That was in the thing that changed some of the language.
Yes, uh, this is Jay Habansky here, and, um, the Zoning Board of Appeals at the last month's meeting had some discussion uh, regarding the section three-point-one-four of the zoning regulations, which identifies setbacks from, uh, coastal resources and inland, uh, freshwater wetlands. Um, I would say this summer more than usual, probably because more people were looking to improve their home with pools. We had quite a bit of pool applications and, um, variances that were required because of, uh, they encroached in the, at the fifty-foot setback to wetlands. Uh, three-point-one, section three-point-one-four prohibits, um, any, or a, a vast majority of, um, activity, construction activity within fifty feet, uh, of, of a wetland. Um, I would say a vast majority of those waivers for those pools, um, or really any structure from wetlands, all had received, uh, approvals or a permit from the inland wetlands water courses commission. Um, Commissioner Young on the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, brought up some discussion about, uh, she is a, uh, planning and zoning a director in Westport, uh, how, how they treat it is if, um, uh, the inland wetlands commission, uh, or administrator grants a permit, uh, for a project within the 50-foot setback that a variance is not requi, that a variance is not required. Um, so, uh, the zoning board of appeals in an effort to, I think, maybe streamline the, the regulations, um, is trying to react to, uh, the, the heavy, heavy load of, of applications we've received regarding this and has put forth the, a recommendation to the zoning commission to consider. Uh, I, you know, I typed up just a quick letter that was emailed out to the commissioners, um, with, with a suggestion. Uh, my suggestion is, is if the zoning commission is interested in considering this, uh, that we refer to the planning commission for refinement and further review, have them work on it and then once they feel comfortable with it, um, we can either bring it back for administrative discussion with the zoning commission, or I can just put together a formal application, um, and bring it back to the zoning commission for consideration. And I, I will await your direction.
Can, can the BZA give away its authority? I know we were reprimanded once for allowing, uh, changes to parking spaces, required parking spaces. Can the BZA give away its authority in that case, in, in this case, in this instance?
Well, they wouldn't, this is Jay Habanski, they wouldn't be giving away their authority. Essentially what they'd be doing is asking the zoning commission to consider a text amendment saying if inland wetlands has already issued a permit, um, and has no problem with it, then, um, it should not require a variance. So they wouldn't be giving away their authority.
I guess they would ask Attorney Sullivan if that's, if, if there is any legal issues with us making that text amendment and allowing them to, in a sense, give away their authority in that issue.
So I think if what the regulation says is that if, what does it say? If 50 feet, um, if it's within 50 feet, it requires a variance?
Correct.
So... You could, you could construct a regulation that would sort of override that by, um, by substituting the requirement for a variance, it being a requirement that the inland wetlands commission, which is the commission that would, um, would have jurisdiction there, has given permission. So it's, it's almost like a super permission as opposed to, to that. Yes, Jay?
Yeah, Jay Habanski, and, and for the commissioners that might not have, uh, a very loose proposal that was suggested from the zoning board of appeals was, um, what would be added to that? So there would still be, the language in section 3.114 would all stay the same, there would still be a 50-foot setback for activity with a line similar to this added at the end. Any direct encroachment into the above specified setback, which has been approved by the Stratford Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission, or the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection Agency, are exempt from such setbacks. So it would just add one more sentence essentially to allow for, um, to, to allow certain things to be exempt, which is quite typical in a lot of our regulations. I mean, a lot of things require either, you know, we require a certain amount of parking spaces, yet, uh, that number is exempt, or, you know, a, a certain use is exempt and they're allowed to use economy spaces. So it, it's pretty typical.
So, Mike Henrik, so if, if inland wetlands said no, would they still have the right at that point to go for a variance to BZA?
Yeah, Jay Habanski here, yes, they would have to. Now, I'll, I'll add, you know, I, I think that, well, the intent of the, the setback regulation has been discussed by Attorney Knott multiple times in front of this board. He seems to think it was a power grab from the zoning commission when the inland wetlands was established in the 80s or 90s and, and the zoning commission wanted to retain power and, and, and be the ones determining what could go there. Um, I still think that there's an environmental value to prohibiting activities and making it difficult to, uh, to do certain development within 50 foot of a wetlands. Uh, you know, within, with conversations with our prior conservation administrator as well as our current one, I know that feeling is similar. So, you know, it, it's really what the, the commission, the zoning commission here feels is worth protecting. If you all feel strongly that, look, we don't want anything happening within, within 50 feet of the wetlands or 75 feet of any coastal resource, you know, I would respect that decision as well. Um, protecting our coastal resources, our, uh, Stratford's coastal resources, um, it's probably our greatest resource that Stratford has is its coastline and it, and its waterways. So, um, I would understand, uh, the commission saying, no, we want to keep that, we don't, we want to make it difficult to develop within these areas, so.
Would, Mike Henrik again, wouldn't, and, and so isn't the typical job of the inland wetlands commission to protect those resources and wouldn't they perhaps be more stringent upon what would or would not be allowed within those, within those setbacks, maybe more so than the zoning commission?
Well, I think, and this is Jay Habanski, and I'll let Attorney Sullivan speak on this as well, because she's probably more of an expert in advising the inland wetlands water courses commission. Um, I think that they are under per-state statutes, under certain requirements to approve certain things, whereas the zoning commission has much more latitude and power in saying, well, they may be able to approve it, but we can, but the zoning commission can prohibit it. And the only way to break that prohibition is by going to get a variance in front of the zoning board of appeals, which can be quite tough to meet those standards, um, by state statute.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's right. Um, I, I guess I would also say that if, if, if an inland wetlands permit is required, then it's required. And this is sort of giving an opportunity for, um, the situ, what, I mean, if, if you write the regulation in a way that says that a inland wetlands permit would override the need for, um, you know, the prohibition on the 50 feet, then, um, then you can, that's the way you can write the regulation. Um, I would expect that what's going to happen is, um, if you had a situation where there was a very sensitive wetland, then, um, inland wetlands wouldn't give a permit and you would actually need both. You would need a, a, a variance because it was not an exception because it was a denial or it was a, you know, a permit required from inland wetlands. So I, I think it's, um, you can do it legally. I mean, that, that's, you know, sort of my, my bottom line, but I, I do think that, um, in some circumstances, it's gonna, if you have a wetland that's not particularly sensitive and, and an, an easy permit has gotten from you in the wetlands, then you're going to save a regulatory step, um, from making them go to the ZBA to get a variance when it's not, um, not really warranted.
And Jay Habanski here, and I think Attorney Sullivan did a good job, a nice job articulating that. Um, I think that's what they're trying to save is that regulatory step.
Okay, so the two approaches you said were to have the planning commission do some draftsmanship or to just submit something directly, is that what you said?
So Jay Habanski here, typically the way that I like to do it is, um, I'll informally present to the zoning commission like I'm doing right now. And if you all feel that it's worth exploring, then the zoning commission will then administratively refer it to the planning commission for an informal review, so that when this comes back as a formal application made by my office, you all are not surprised, the planning commission is not surprised, and everyone, this is really everyone's second and third look at it.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I mean, let's see what it comes out to be. I, I think I get the, the gist of what you're trying to accomplish, you know, and if, you know, inland wetlands having looked at something and, and approved it, you know, that, that pretty much says that, you know, I, I know that commission is like laser focused on the technicalities of, of wetlands protection, um, just by their mandate and, um, you know, if they're good with it, you know, I, I, I could not imagine a situation where we would, um, where, where they would approve something and then we would disapprove it. If anything, I could see the other way around where they might disapprove something, we might think that, oh, it actually probably was merited, so that still gives them the opportunity to appeal and to go for variances and so on. It seems like it makes sense to me, so, um, I don't know how the other members feel. I don't want to speak for anybody else. I think, Mike, you said, let's go ahead with it. I, I think I'm okay with you drafting it and bringing it up to the planning commission informally, um, and we can proceed. Mr. Vigliati, Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Fadet, Mr. Vacola, any other comments?
No, I'm, I'm in favor of letting planning have a look at it and, and to hear what they have to say as well.
I'm also okay with them, uh, moving forward with this.
Okay. Okay, I think you got your instructions.
Thank you.
Okay, I actually found the agenda, believe it or not, it was still sitting in the email. So, and of course, now I just lost it again. Uh, any other...
So the only things we had were goal setting, Stratford Army Engine Plant, recommendations to the council, plan of conservation debate and development in the transit-oriented district. And then beyond that, we're just the next two meetings, October 6th and October 28th.
Okay, I don't foresee us having to be here on the 6th, but Mr. Habanski, anything you think is coming up?
Uh, nothing that I'm aware of yet, but if something comes up, I'll be in communication with the chair and we decide, uh, the chair decides a meeting is, is warranted, we will all send out that notification.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Habanski and Ms. Sullivan, can, is it possible to set up a different call? We need, you know, I need to talk about, uh, finalizing the decision and issuing the written statement on the, um, it's going to be done on the 9th. Game's fine.
Mr. Chairman, you thinking about it tonight?
Yeah, because I think we're under the gun for the...
Sure, what I'll do is, um, I'll, 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 uh, I'll send out a, um, I'll, I'll create a go-to meeting right after we close this out and I can send it over to both of you and we can get on a call.
Okay.
Sounds great.
Okay.
So let me make sure I have, uh, both of the, because I'm not on my work desktop and I don't have everybody's email on my personal one, um, make sure I have the right emails. So Chris, I believe yours is Solhavy@AOL.
Yeah.
And Attorney Sullivan, yours is P. Sullivan.
At.
Cohen and Wolf.
Correct.
C.O.H.E.N.
A.N.D. spelled out, W.O.L.F.
Great, uh, keep an eye out, it may go to your junk, I'm going to send it to my personal email.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, we'll take a motion to adjourn. Mr. Vigliati, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Nguyen, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, no, we're out of here at 8:06. Well, you know, we had an early meeting for once, so have a good evening, everyone.
Yeah.
Take care.
We have an early meeting, you guys don't.
Yeah, I know, we have more work to do. Bye-bye.